So, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Town Council regular meeting on August the 21st, and we'll start with a pledge led by Dennis.
I pledge to the District of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with the redeeming and justice for all.
Item number two, are there any visitors who wish to speak? All right. Hearing none. Item number three, approval of minutes. Is there a motion for the approval of the August 7th meeting minutes? Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Item number four, appointments and reappointments. Is Matthew Granfield here? I don't believe he has to be because he was here before. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, great. So, there is, Matthew Granfield is hoping to be appointed to the Sustainability Committee. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. The next appointment will be Dylan Walter. He is currently on the Economic Development Commission as an alternate, and he would like the full seat until 6:30 28. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Congratulations, Dylan. All right. Item number five, police fleet update. I understand that Enterprise is here. I don't know who will start.
Sure. We've already passed out a quick handbill to everybody. Thank you for putting us on the agenda tonight. We appreciate it.
Chief, you want me to hand this one out, too?
Please do. So, we have prepared two quick documents for you. Basically, for fleet management, as you are aware, law enforcement in suburban areas is completely dependent upon the use of police vehicles to respond to emergencies and for routine patrol. Fleet has always been a sore spot since I arrived here in 2016. We had a very problematic fleet. We have been able to make some progress over the years, but because of a change last year in Connecticut's tax laws, Enterprise has been able to provide a product, which I think is going to prove to be a great cost savings to the town of Clinton and will give us much better performance out of our fleet and save the taxpayers dollars. So, I'm going to let Jim and John come up and just give you a quick slide deck presentation. So, it's a little hard to wrap your head around because you say to yourself, how is this going to work? But they can explain it much better than I, and I'll be happy to answer any of your questions, and they're also open to your questions.
I have a question or two that's not related to them. Do the police use, are they assigned a car and they keep it, or are they pooled?
No, they're pooled. So, we run 24/7. We don't have enough to assign to officers. And basically, nobody in the Northeast does that. That's pretty much Southern, Midwest, and out West. They assign vehicles to officers and they keep it for their personal vehicle. Here, they're just all hot cycle through.
And then, you know, the lease document, does our Town Council review our lease documents? Do we have lawyers look at it, or just us?
Yeah, we have lawyers. We got it.
Okay. So, I'll turn it over to Jim. John? And give me a quick presentation.
Thank you. Well, thank you for having us, Council. My name is Jim DiCaprio. I've been with Enterprise 29 years, believe it or not. Before you ask, everyone always asks you if you're related to Leonardo, the answer to that question. So, you can see your resemblance, right?
I was going to ask.
It was always in the west.
Thank you.
So, just to start, we are very prevalent in the government space. We have 2,893 municipalities in North America using our program already, 162 in New York, New Jersey, Connecticut, and Massachusetts. And in the packet I handed out, there's a list of references on there, too. Just a bunch of bigger cities that you might know from the states, and also five other county executives that have offered to give us support if you needed to call them. What I have on the screen here is this is really showing you how it is that we can do what we can do. So, what I did here is I compared a three-year program with us versus the typical plan, which is a three-year buy and hold. And we're just comparing apples to apples, just three years versus three years. So, the two real big ideas about why this program works is, number one, it's the sale of the vehicle. So, what we, the way we work at the end of the term, we would sell the vehicle on your behalf, and then you would be able to redeploy that money back into a new vehicle. You can go do whatever you want. It's your money. We sell it on your behalf and do all the work. And then, number two is, we actually write these things down to a non-zero book value. So that during the time at the end of the term, there's going to be a non-zero book value, let's say in this case, the depreciation is $14,000 less. So, the actual depreciation of the vehicle will be 49.64. We would depreciate it to a non-zero percentage, so that would be lower your multi-payments, right? Because it's going to be about $35,000, $14,000 less. So, in the terms of cost, just doing that one vehicle for us is going to be $50,000. And if you want to scroll down, John? And I also didn't give us any credit, or I tried to be very conservative with these estimates. I gave us no credit for helping you with the operating expenses. But it's obvious, all right, if you're going to have newer vehicles in your fleet, they're going to get better gas mileage, there's going to be no fuel degradation, there's going to be no catastrophic maintenance. But I didn't include any of that because I wanted to give a fair shake and just talk about the two big ways that we really help. But the reality is that number, this number is never going to be zero because we're going to help you with the operating expenses, too. So, and the same thing with everything else. If you scroll down, keep going. So, just say there, so we did an analysis, total cost savings that we would be able to provide for one vehicle is going to be about $10,000 over the three-year term. If we did two vehicles, it's going to be $20,000, and so on and so forth.
Savings from what?
Compared to, compare if you buy a car for three years and hold it versus having the car managed by us through our program. That's really the key. So, go ahead.
That was the key, was that you're comparing three to three.
Yes, correct.
So, a big step here is that we're changing from a maintenance or management of having cars for seven years to three years.
Correct.
Do you have an example for a longer period of time, like five years?
No, I'd be happy to put that together for you, but the note that I got was to compare apples to apples.
Can you go back up to the top of this?
Sure.
So, in this scenario, the car costs $50,000. At the end, you're going to sell for $15,000 at the end of three years. So, it goes down by $35,000 during the three-year period that we hold it.
Correct.
And so, that's the depreciation expense.
Correct.
And the $15,000 itself, or comes back to us.
Yes, correct.
And then, so our cost is 35 grand, plus we pay interest. What's the interest rate?
It's usually, it's done through Sourcewell. So, it's the three-year T bill plus 350 basis points.
Okay. And what's the total taxes? What's that, taxes?
Oh, that's the, in Connecticut, there, there's a property.
Sales tax?
No.
Well, it's not property tax for a town.
Yeah, probably, those numbers are basically the same. So, yeah, I didn't realize that you guys probably don't pay that tax. So, of course, those numbers will be adjusted by the same amount, right? Still 7600 by 7600.
So, that's the lease, and if you owned it, you assumed we'd pay property taxes on the own side, too? And the number would be the same, you're saying? So, you would take it out on both sides?
Yeah, you realize, we're not, we're just managing the vehicle for you and taking care of all the stuff.
Oh, so there is taxes because you own it?
Well, we hold the title, but you have all the equity rights.
Yeah, so there's a question. Is there property tax on a police car that's owned by Enterprise versus owned by the town of Clinton? That could be a big difference.
According to what we, we work with lots of other governments, as long as we have certificate 134, CT 134, we're good.
Say that again. CT 134.
Yeah, it's 134, right?
What's that?
It's a Connecticut certificate that can be filled out, and as long as we put on all the documents that it's tax exempt, according to CERT 134, we're good.
Tax exempt.
So, are there any other questions?
Great questions.
I had a question. Is there any other municipal police departments within the state doing the same program?
We do have Westport in Connecticut. We recently just got into Connecticut in this situation, so.
And you had Stratford, too, right?
And we're not signed, Stratford is coming on our program for sure. We already have signed documents from them. I'm just waiting to place their actual initial orders, which is going to be for Nissan Pathfinder. But they've agreed to come on, too.
How long have you been in Westport?
I think it's like 15 months, I should have thought, to bring that information from you. I could check and find out, though. It's a little over a year, that I know for sure.
Yeah, we've been in the government space for close to 30 years, and it's a segment within our business that, over the last 10 years, has really grown for two reasons. One is because most of the government agencies that we work with are in the same predicament as you are today, where you have an older fleet that you cannot replace based off how often you should because of not having the funding to do it. So, this program not only gives you that allowance because we have a funding structure where we lease a big vehicle to a residual value, so you pay less, but also in the scenario that you're asking for, if we did apples to apples, maybe two vehicles over a six-year period versus one vehicle over a six-year period, the magic of this program is nobody buys vehicles better than government agencies. So, even Enterprise Rent-A-Car doesn't buy vehicles as well as you do. We buy vehicles, great, but not as well as you do. So, when you pair your acquisition cost with our ability to manage your vehicle and get you out of the vehicle at the right time and sell that vehicle, there's one thing that Enterprise does very well, which is sell vehicles at the right time for the highest cost that we can, because that's how we make our money and how we make our profit. You get to piggyback off our ability to sell vehicles. You still get your same buy. So, in those comparisons, when we do those two vehicles over six years versus you going out and buying one vehicle over six years, it's almost every single time either cost-neutral or savings to you.
So, you said Enterprise sells vehicles very well, and so you could get more money for them. What if after two years into the lease, you realize that the market's strong and it's a good time to go sell it? You would come contact us and say, hey?
100%, yes.
And if you sell it for more than the 15 grand?
It's your money.
Will you get the money?
Your money, yep. Yeah, so we've done that many times.
Where does Enterprise make their money?
Great question. So, we have a management fee to fund this program, so we make a little bit of money on each lease that we have.
Sarah, say that again.
We have a management fee monthly that you would pay.
And where's that built in?
Yep, right here. Yeah, so we could go through, if we were fortunate to get to a quoting stage, we could go through all that.
You're entitled to make money.
Yeah. Appreciate that. Do you want to tell our other customers that?
How about like an accident? One of the vehicles gets in an accident downtime. What's the return time before that vehicle either gets serviced or replaced, you know, based on the accident? You know, do you have like a, say, a fleet, or it'll take three months to turn it around? Or, you know, for here, if you lose a car, you could potentially be waiting for the next cycle to buy cars. How long's, how's that work in terms of replacement of a vehicle that's been in an accident?
I mean, I would say it depends on the size of the accident. But I would also say we run a for-profit fleet of 2.3 million vehicles, so we do have a lot of leverage when it comes to getting repairs done quickly. And then, we also have a team of 700 people that are managing and vetting these kind of repairs, too. So, for maintenance and then also for accidents.
And so, the maintenance of these cars would still be with us?
If you want it to be. This is, think of it as we're the quarterbacks. We're going to help you manage the vehicles in a better way. You still want to do the maintenance yourself, you can. If you want to put some of the cars in our program, which is what a lot of governments do, especially for the smaller, like, routine maintenance, just so they get in and out quicker. But again, that's totally up to you. It's all à la carte.
For the municipalities you work with, how many of those are law enforcement fleets?
I don't have that answer. I'd be happy to look that up for you if you want.
And that CT 134 form is a sales tax exemption, right?
Yes, CERT 134.
And then, property tax?
Property tax exemption, yep.
Also?
CERT 134 basically says that everything, property, there's no property tax for anyone in the state of Connecticut that has CERT 134, as long as when we sign the documents we put on there exempt according to CERT 134. There's also one CERT 119 for not-for-profits. So, it's separate from CERT 134.
Chief, how much do you pay in maintenance per year on your vehicle?
So, right now, we're looking at the last three-year average between 25 and 30,000. And if you look at the, our vehicle fleet right now, I've got four cars that are in need of major repair. All of our 2017s need transmission replacements, so that's going to jack that up. If I have to hold out those cars, we have to pay for that. So, we've been lucky in that we've been able to move away from a much higher maintenance cost when we had our Chrysler fleet, because they were constantly down and had major repairs. We moved to the Fords. We've been able to cycle them out a little bit quicker, and they're a little bit better purpose-built for police work as opposed to the Chrysler's, which were just thrown into, you know, law enforcement service when Ford stopped producing the Crown Victoria. So, right now, we're between 25 and 30,000. It's basically oil changes, brake pads, tires. That's where we sit right now. Every once in a while, we haven't had, knock on wood, we haven't had a lot of issues with the Fords because the oldest ones in the fleet are 2017s, and those are kind of being rotated out. So, we're doing okay for right now. Of course, they just jinx it and blow up 17 cars tomorrow morning.
The new cars would be Fords?
So, yeah. I would, Fords have been very reliable for us. We've realized, what we wanted to realize, which was, you know, reliability, performance, and not having huge maintenance costs when they do break, which was not the case with the other fleet. We had catastrophic, every time we had an issue, it was catastrophic. Cam shafts, motor mounts, wiring harnesses, transmissions. Usually, your repair bill on a normal Chrysler Charger, when we had the Chargers in the fleet, was upwards of $2,000, and that's eight years ago, per vehicle, per instance, which was racking up pretty darn quick. The Fords, basically, like I said, brakes, tires, and oil. Every once in a while, we'll have a minor issue with some engine firing that we've had. The biggest bill we've had is maybe $1,200 on a repair for one of our Fords at this point.
So, we have 20 cars that we own ourselves right now, right? And they would go to Enterprise, and they would go sell them for us?
They would sell them for us so we could restart the fleet with 11 in the first year. That was our rough estimate. It's going to get 11 new cars in the first year. So, the fleet that we have now, which would be cycled, and the average mileage, when you add in the engine idle time, and Ford rec states that for every 33, every hour of engine idle time, you have to add 33 miles to the odometer. We did the math, and basically, where we sit right now, the average of our cars is 194,000 miles per vehicle in the fleet. That's the average. So, even though they don't show high mileage, and they're, you know, some are 2020s, some are 21s, some are 22s, there's still 200,000, 195,000, 300,000 miles on some of these vehicles.
So, the first year, you'd get 11. So, of the 20 cars that you have, Enterprise would sell 11, and you'd keep nine.
Correct. We'd sell the ones that, we would sell the ones that are the oldest ones.
And they're on your balance sheet, Bob, right? But at net book value, probably very low if they're seven years or more, they might be zero.
They should be fully appreciated. All good questions.
Any other questions?
All right. So, I like the lease versus buy analysis, you know? If we could spend a little time, just crunch a little numbers and make sure we get comfortable to the numbers.
Yeah, that's fair.
Anybody else? No. Okay. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you for having us.
Mary Ann is here. Jack is here. Would you like to?
Sure. Man, I thought he would have my back. He does have my back. Good evening. Thank you for getting me on the agenda and giving us this opportunity to speak with you tonight. Tonight, our board member and Budget and Finance Subcommittee Chairperson, Jack Sherbin, is with me tonight. Erica was not able to be here. So, on the agenda, and I think this information was shared as part of the agenda, so we put together some of the background. As most of you are aware, that there is an existing non-lapsing account for, with a specific policy that was established in 2020, that's what the first part talks about, that is specifically for unanticipated special education costs as well as capital expenditures. And that was established in 2020. We have not contributed to that since then, but there have been a few times during the budget season that we have, or the decision was made by the town manager and the town council to offset some capital expenditures in the budget request from this account. So, there were a couple of places where that happened. Many of you remember in January came down with Erica. We were concerned about our special ed cost overruns at that time, and we did ask for approval from the town council to use funds from this account, if necessary, to offset the unanticipated special ed costs. And I believe the request was 3, there we go, 337, 453. In the end, we did not need to request that. We ended up with a deficit just around $170,000 in our tuition line item after some changes in student movement, and we were able to cover that with our operating budget amount. So, we did not need to tap into this account, even though you had approved that if necessary. So, at this point, existing state statute does allow for up to 2% of any unrequested, unexpended funds, quote surplus, rather than have it returned to the undesignated fund that Boards of Ed can request to have up to 2% of their budget be put into a non-lapsing account. So, we are here today on Monday night. We discussed this with the board, and they did approve the idea of coming down and asking the town council to move, and we're requesting $350,000 of the funds to be moved into the non-lapsing account. There's two reasons for that. There is a balance in there right now. I have Bob's report. I think it's 499, 276. We continue to see increases in our special education costs. We have additional students who have moved into the district just recently. We're getting ready to open school that we haven't anticipated, and we are hoping, again, that we can manage it within our operating budget by managing our budget very carefully. But that continues to be a trend. The other piece is we do have some capital projects. One in particular is an Elliott Windows project that we anticipate, it's been pushed off for many years, and we do anticipate that the overall costing of that is probably going to be close to 800 to $1 million to do that project at this point. We have money this year to get our architectural plans and RFP for that and get the costing, and then we would be coming with that as an item. So, from the Board of Ed's perspective and our Building and Grounds and Budget and Finance Subcommittee, we felt that if this transfer goes in there, this is something that could potentially help offset that cost when it comes to play. So, that's why the request is here. We provided you the information, and I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Yeah, I have one question. How did we get to that figure? Because the last time that we, well, when we approved the 337,453, we were going to, that was from $544,000 at that time. Now, left a balance of 206, 547 in that account.
Yeah, I'm just, actually, I have the sheet that Bob did because this is managed by the town. So, I just pulled that number from here.
One, just one.
Right. I don't know many of the.
I'll read it to you after you, that you called.
I just went into the cam records and extracted this information. Goes back to 2019, 20 where you.
I know what it goes back to. I'm just telling you that when they came in, in January 3rd of 2024, we had $554,000 in that non-lapsing account. We approved for Board of Ed to use 337, 453. Did you track that?
What's that? Did you? You didn't. We didn't end up needing to use it, but you had approved it.
You didn't use any?
Right. But I didn't use it.
Let's just say you used it all. I don't know what you did with it, but the fact is that there was, after that, was a balance of 206, 547. So.
Yeah, so that 206, you had the 337 back, right?
No, no, no.
Because they didn't use it.
Can't add 337.
150 of the 337? No, we didn't use any of it. We were able to manage our operating budget and find savings to offset it. So, we did not need to, we requested it just in case in January. But we did not use it.
I guess what I'm trying to say, if you didn't use that 337, 453.
Sure.
Should go back to the balance.
Correct.
Of 544,000.
That's right. That's right. And that's what she's saying.
I don't know what that number is because it's managed by the town. So, I don't have authorization to do anything to it.
Currently, there's 499,000.
That's what I said. What happened to that little bit of 544? Down to 490?
There's a box truck replacement, well, that's 2223, of 39,000. Is it the box truck replacement?
Right, that looks like it's.
That looks like that's about it.
And then, it came down to 499, 76.
Yeah.
Yeah, these numbers are tied to the national.
Because of the fiscal year.
544, 544, 499, that's a difference of 45,000.
Yeah, it's close.
39,000. I mean, if it's accounting, I get it, but I mean, the accounting should be accurate.
Yeah. So, so.
Just for particulars, just to let you know, the black book don't lie.
So, to keep your, to follow your thought.
I don't manage the account, so I don't know.
So, now, what you're saying is you'd like to take the excess from this year and put it there as well.
And add it.
So, the 540 plus 350 more gets them close to 900 grand in that account, right?
Correct. From what you guys are calculating, what I saw in the packets different.
So, you're anticipating that you're going to have a surplus of 382 or something like that?
Yeah, it's, at this point, I believe it's 380, 604, 89 cents. That's correct.
And you want to take 350 of it and put it in the lapsing?
For either capital or special ed overruns, yes. And again, that is controlled town.
But the state says you can take up to 2%. Is that 2%?
2% is 800 grand.
That's 1%.
Yeah, it's only 1%.
Less than 1%.
So, do you have it in the capital plan for the Elliott Windows?
This year, we received 40,000 to get the architectural plans and the cost estimates. It's been in there since I became superintendent in 2016. The, I think it was 2015, they finished the, one of the wings, the fifth and sixth grade wing, and they replaced all the windows and the unit heaters. Next on the list, a year or two later, was supposed to be the window project for seventh and eighth grade. But at that point, budgets were very tight, and it got pushed, and we pushed it again, and we pushed it again. So, we are at a point where those, it has to get done. The windows are not necessarily safe or operational at this point.
So, this transfer to the non-lapsing fund, is it a one-time deal? Or would, if we agree to do it now, it's every time?
No, no. It's each time at this point. We would come back and ask. And that, you know, that's how the law works. There's actually some new legislation that addresses it that may give some leeway to the Board of Ed to have some say in that. Right now, we're just operating under what we have, which is to request to you. And again, in the end, what you do with that.
So, when you came to us in January for the 337 for special ed money, you'd have to do that again?
Exactly. Any expenditure under the policy that this account exists under has to be approved by the Town Council.
We created that account way back when.
There's an MOU.
A million, a million somehow dollars, if I remember correctly, right? Over $1 million in that non-lapsing.
Yeah, $1,141, back in 2019.
Yeah.
Oh, no, sorry, that's the surplus.
That was a surplus.
It's 667.
But you can only take 2% of your operating. So, 2% of the operating was the 667, 209. Yeah. And that was the year of COVID, so we didn't have any, all our transportation money, all of those pieces. And that's part of why it was established, I think, is both sides, I think, had some surplus, but we obviously did. And it was recommended, I think, maybe by the.
So, if we put the money in the non-lapsing fund, you can't, you won't disperse it until you come back to the Town Council.
Exactly.
And it could come back to the general funder once it's in this trust.
That I don't, I don't know how that works.
That's the account, the non-lapsing.
Whether you guys decide.
As I said, anytime they need the money, they have no authority to take it by themselves. Board of Ed can't touch it. They have to come to the council. We have to approve any action. We have to approve any action.
And so then my next question was, what if, what if we changed our line and we needed the money back?
Right. Can you dissolve it and put it into?
It's in there now. It's irrevocable, is the question.
But you can, you can, when it's budget season, you can.
Apply it to capital.
You can deduct out of your special ed line item.
The amount and fund it, have them put a request in to fund that reduction from this account. So you're saving it from the general fund and offsetting it with this account for that purpose.
The nonlapsing account is very specific. There's only certain things you can do with that money. That's how the statute reads, and that's how that's regulated, so that they can't put money into that account, so that the Boards of Ed can come to us and say, well, I need it for whatever. It has to be specific, and the money when you set up the account was for specific reasons for uses.
But what is also being said is that there is new legislation that is stating that the Boards of Ed can can create.
That's not, it hasn't passed yet. So there's legislation that they're talking about giving Boards of Education some authority over that money.
Right.
But as of right now, there is not.
Right. And we're still functioning under the MOU and that statute. Yes.
Any other questions? That's it. All right, Dennis?
We have one more. I mean, so when we established that, we had 665,000, right?
Yeah.
And then there were.
667.
And so why must we have it?
At 894 now.
So part of the reason the Board is requesting that is if we manage it well and we're returning money to the town, we know we have this big capital project. What generally happens when we get to budget season, depending on where the town is at, right? Either things get cut from capital, which is why this window project has been pushed, or we just can't fund it, or the town is looking at bonding these big amounts. And I know, and I've heard, we don't want to do that, right? So from the Board of Ed's perspective, this kind of sets aside, we manage the money, we've saved, and we're returning it to the town. This now sets it aside so we can offset that project, and it won't be in our capital request, hopefully. And we can apply this to that project. So there's no need to ask for additional taxpayer money. There's no need to, you know, cut other things. It it's there, but it's town money. So one way or another, the problem is that if it's there, it can offset those future costs for that window project. And that's really where, why we're coming at this point. The previous amount for special ed costs, even though I'm very nervous about it, was enough. But knowing we have this big project, from the Board's perspective, coming and asking for that, it makes sense, right? It makes sense that that will offset any need to ask taxpayers for a portion of that. That's the hope. If it comes in higher, it is a reimbursable project from the state, probably in the 41% to 44%, just like our roofs, Dennis. So rather than have to bond or put it into capital or ask for an increase at that point, we're taking money that's being returned to the town. And in essence, you're setting it aside for that purpose in the end, is kind of what you would be doing. It's just the mechanism that exists, and the Board felt like this was the year to ask for it, knowing that that's on the horizon.
The way, the way I look at it is we, as a council, we, we've been talking about, instead of sticking all this money in the undesignated fund, we've been talking about little buckets or tranches of putting money in for different things, fire trucks or whatever. And we haven't got to that point. And this is, in my opinion, this is just another bucket. And and we do have, the thing that I've always been hesitant about with the buckets, with the, with the town surplus, is that once we stick it in there, we have to use it for that purpose. But like Michelle said, here, we put that money in there, has to be used for that purpose, but we can use the levers of capital projects and operating budgets in the budget season if we want to take money away from them to.
Force them to use this.
Use this.
So we don't lose that power.
Yeah.
Any other questions? None. So do we have a motion to transfer 350,000 from the 2023, 2024 Board of Ed operating budget into the existing Board of Ed nonlapsing account established by the town? Is there a second?
Second.
Conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries unanimously. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, so on to item number seven, which is authorizing resolution for the Clinton Town Beach Project. Do you want to address that?
So last council meeting, the application that Bo and the rec department needed to submit for the $250,000, he was also supposed to ask for a resolution at that time. So it was just a clerical error that it wasn't asked for. So you approved for me to enter in that. This is just another part that needs to be done for the application, which unfortunately wasn't submitted at that time.
Okay, so I have a rather long motion to read. A motion to, all right, looking for a motion on this resolution. We hereby certify that the following is a true and correct copy of a resolution adopted by the Town of Clinton at its duly called and held meeting on August 21, 2024, at which a quorum was present and acting throughout, and that the resolution has not been modified, rescinded, or revoked. And is it present in full force and effect, resolved that the Town of Clinton may enter in with and deliver to the State of Connecticut Department of Energy and Environmental Protection any and all documents which it deems to be necessary or appropriate for a grant of $250,000 for the Clinton Town Beach? And be it further resolved that Michelle Benevenia, Town Manager of the Town of Clinton, is authorized and directed to execute and deliver any and all documents on behalf of the Town of Clinton, and to do and perform all acts and things which she deems to be necessary or appropriate to carry out the terms of such documents. The undersigned further certifies that Michelle Benevenia now holds the office of Town Manager, and that she has held that office since June 2024, and witness whereof the undersigned has executed this certificate on the 21st day of August 2024. Is there a motion? Second?
Second.
Conversation? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. Great, thank you. So now we are on to item number eight, which is the ARPA decision. And do we need to rehash that workshop, or can we just?
I think you have to.
I think we're good?
Well, everyone is good with.
I'll make a motion, and we can decide whether we're good with that.
I think that what came out of it was that the $30,000 would be set aside and allocated for an economic development consultant, and then the interview process with the person that the EDC and myself are recommending would take place, and we would use those funds to pay him and/or if someone else is selected.
Okay, all right. So we are looking for a motion to reallocate a total of $280,850. And the items would be for an economic development consultant at 30,000, fire apparatus brush truck for 85,000, a fire hose replacement for 53,350, and a public works payloader for 112,500. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstaining? Motion carries. All right, excellent. ARPA is finished. One would never know that $3.8 million was so hard to, hard to spend. All right, so now we're on to item number nine, which is a finance director's report.
Good evening. Again, at this meeting, you'll see two reports from two different fiscal years. No significant changes, obviously, in '23, '24 forecast. On page two, for the old year, you'll see on the expenditure statement outlining the accounts that are in deficit. They represent 19 line items totaling about $42,000, 40% of that being the legal services line item. Most of these line items can be satisfied internally within the department that they come from. You'll see the final budget transfer request at your next meeting. And this is probably the last meeting where I present the old year until we get to present the financial statements, which the old year is obviously going to be in there. On the 2024, '25 revenue expenditure budget reports, the current year levy year-to-date receipts represent July collections, and that represents 52.4% of the total current year levy budget. Compared to prior year July receipts, that was 52.9%. So both years are within range. Obviously, in July, we collect the most taxes, so they're looking good. On the investment side, we have finally transferred $10 million from Bank of America to the Connecticut Stiff Fund, and this is going to result in about an increase in investment income by about $156,000. We're looking into another 10 million to be invested elsewhere at high interest rates, at investments that were legally, obviously, allowed to do per state statutes, but.
So last year in the '23, '24, the investment income came in almost a million higher than we thought. But we budgeted this year a higher number, so we won't see that $1 million, is that right, in '24, '25?
It will probably still exceed budget.
Well, but you said 156 here.
Well, an additional 156, just on that $10 million. So obviously, we have more than $10 million. So we will exceed the investment income line out of this year as well. So it'll be interesting to see what we budget for in '25, '26. To be seen, because we know interest rates start probably.
So they raise, if they raise interest rates, ours aren't locked in, or is ours variable?
We're variable.
And how about on our debt side?
Debt side is not.
It's locked in fixed.
It's locked.
Good.
The '23, '24 front balance projections not changed for the most part. It's expected to decrease by 1.2 million. And just last comment, the annual audits going along well. The auditors have received everything they've requested, and we're moving in a good direction.
We use, how many years have we used the same auditor?
I think it's five or six years, and I think the council requested a change, but there was no town in Connecticut that could get new auditors during COVID, because the staff on the auditing firms decreased, and then they couldn't take on any more clients. And I'd be surprised even now if they're taking on new clients.
So so if we don't change firms, do they have to rotate the personnel on our account? Does that person have to change the partner?
They could upon request. I I don't see that, because it takes a few years to get familiar with the town and operations. Obviously, every year, they ask questions on internal control, but it's an advantage, actually. When you have new people, they come in and ask those questions that you answered five years ago, which takes a lot of time before you even get to the audit. People that's been around, they start from, they start the audit right away. And that's it.
Any other questions?
On the the fund balance analysis page, there's nonspendable of 125 and committed to 799. What's nonspendable?
It's prepaid items on the balance sheet.
Prepaid assets like insurance?
Prepaid expenses, or to be an expense.
Yeah, like what?
Like what?
Could be prepaid insurance. I could find it. I know exactly what it is. I just don't have that in my head. But I could certainly report on that next time.
What's the 799 committed?
I'll have to find out about that, too. I did, I did know it, but it's out of my head.
And obviously, they assigned, Bobby, you have to break down what's assigned from our fund balance. You have 4 million through.
Right, so the assigned represents the use of fund balance in the next budget year.
So that's what we used in the last budget from the undesigned fund.
That's, that's, that's what we're using in the, in the next budget. So in other words, we obviously don't have an assigned fund balance of that much, because we budgeted to use it in the next budget year.
In the year July 1, '24 to June 30, '24.
Right, the one that we're in.
And then any projects that we've allocated funds for, would those show up on this?
The project that we've allocated funds for is in a line item in the budget. Come July 1, typically, those approved projects are transferred to a Fund 60, which is the Capital Improvement Fund. I'll be happy to report on that Capital Improvement Fund at the next meeting.
Anyone else? That's it?
Good point, thank you.
All right, yeah, thank you, Bob. On to the chairman's report, just a short one. We had, had a priority on communication when we were looking for our town manager. And recently, if you've seen what, the letter that was put out on the town webpage, and I believe in social media, too, was an extremely difficult communication to be made. Sometimes people don't make communications like that because they're afraid of the, a risk. But it was made, and it was made beautifully on a very difficult subject. And in that communication, it also had help. It let people know where they could get help if they were to need it. And I speak on behalf of me to say thank you very much, because that was a very difficult letter to write, the most difficult one could write, I would think. I've been notified by the superintendent and Board of Ed, as required by state statute, that their contract negotiations for teachers and administrators will begin. And as they do each year, they've invited an elected official with fiscal authority to be present at those negotiations. Those fiscal authorities would be us, the council. Because we, the elected officials with fiscal authority, are allowed to be present, but without the right to participate in any way, I chose, as has been done for the last 15 years, to respectfully deny the invitation. Another item is that the town historian, their current tenure will be up in January of 2025. As we did with the poet laureate, we, we passed on our responsibility of choosing one to the library. And I'm just bringing up the, the idea that perhaps we want to think about that in the future. Perhaps we don't want to choose the town historian. Perhaps we want to send that on to somebody else who would be better equipped to do that. No decision, just an idea. Because I have been, I have already gotten interested parties, and that's why I bring it up now. Okay. And that's it for me. Town manager's report, sorry.
So we have been approached by STEAM program, which is STEAM Train. It's a nonprofit organization that seeks to develop next-generation STEM innovators and serve as a conduit for growth, development, and advancement in the community. The STEAM Train has developed strategies that will intentionally recruit and train girls, women, and underrepresented populations to pursue fields of study that include STEM disciplines. The future will be brighter as we illuminate their path, and the Town of Clinton is going to support this program by being a partner with them and help them with interviews and interview process. And then we are going to have an intern. There is no cost to us. There will be an intern that will work with Ivan in our IT department for 40 hours. This individual will go through the interview process. They will have a full background check and all of the training that will be needed through this program. But it is very excited for Clinton to be represented alongside of other such partners as Wesleyan University as part of this STEAM partnership. So this is great for us. The Pearson School project is moving forward as part of the anticipated information sessions and town meetings that will be coming in the month of September and potentially in October. We have, I have extended the personal services agreement with Carl Kilduff until the end of October to continue his work on the project, and it has added his attendance and participation in these meetings, as he has a history with the project. We are in the process of updating the website to have a landing page for the community to find out about the most recent project details and renderings and timelines of the meetings once they are finalized by the council. I. I also want to congratulate and acknowledge the Clinton Police Department. They are the first-place winner in the New England Association of Chiefs Community Policing Award. The award reflects the hard work and dedication of every member of the PD, and I want to thank them for their outstanding service to the Clinton community and great work, Chief DeMaio.
And that is my report. That's it? All right, is there any council discussion?
I have one thing. Say, communication. I think everyone on the council received an email from a resident. You know, I think it's been on the news and everything with the frustration with Eversource and the public benefits payments. I know she specifically said, you know, the Cromwell Town Council. I think every, everybody received the email?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, I know, she spoke about the Cromwell Town Council, how they look to formulate a letter from the town itself or from the council to the state, and you know, basically, whether it's PUR or the State of Connecticut and legislation, and kind of say, hey, so I asked Michelle how this affected us directly within our community. I was most focused on how it's going to impact our budget. So I know it's a sore subject in general, but I guess the biggest thing going forward is if it would make sense for us in Clinton and our town council and the town to put forward a letter that's similar to Cromwell and support, like many municipalities, of what the impact of the municipal budgets would be based on the increase in that specific count. Maybe there's a way we can collectively offset it, so the burden is shared more by everybody, so.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Just what I handed out is our last five fiscal years electric bill total percent, so you can do a comparison to see the increase that the town has experienced through rising costs, to give you a perspective of how it does affect the town.
So I guess the thought was more discussion on how we can address, you know, that specific piece, and if we want to address it as a town or not.
So the state's taking it up in January, right, in the next General Assembly?
Nope. They have said nothing. The conversation that's gone on is that we would like to go into a special session in order to discuss it now, because you don't certify your budget. This past budget not certified till September, so when the comptroller can certify our budget in September, if we meet before then in a special session, then we can go in and we can talk about what we can do as far as funding for it, to try to help alleviate the costs. So the only way that we can do any of this for cost is in special session. It's been said that they want to kick it down the road to January and have a special session possibly in January, but there's nothing, no special sessions have been scheduled.
And the public benefit surcharge expires April of 2025, right? I mean, it's for...
So what happens is the benefit charge, there's two portions of the benefit charge. One is the Millstone law that was passed in 2017, and that goes to 2029. The other portion of that is the, relates to the moratorium for shut-offs during COVID. So the governor, by executive order, said that they're not going to allow, they put a moratorium on shut-offs. So basically, what happened is that amount of money that was due for that, we knew. I mean, the legislature knew what was going on. We knew in February what was going to happen, because we knew when the shut-off date would come back on, and we knew that the monies that were due to Millstone would begin. So we knew all of that, and discussions really didn't, there was proposals that were put forth to use some of the ARPA money in order to help offset that. That didn't happen, so then it just basically got kicked down the road. So the benefit charge will be there for a while. It's 10-month payback on the benefit charge, but there's going to be an increase in cost, because Millstone is still going to be there, because the governor Malloy was the one that initially signed it. Then in 19, there was another agreement that was signed for 10 years, so there's a payback to them. So there's a lot of coal-megaled funds and all that, and then there's the additional charge, the new increase. So in the midst of all that, we had then had an increase. So the increase is for infrastructure and electric vehicles, to help build the infrastructure. So again, that's a lot of money that everybody in the state of Connecticut is paying for, even though everybody doesn't have electric vehicles. So it's a mess. It's a complete mess, and the only way that you can go in and try to solve some of the problems is go to a special session. But there's not enough agreement in order to do that, so we, there's no date that's going to be set for that. The governor says he would allow it to happen, he would like it to happen, but the House and the Senate aren't playing nicely in the sandbox, for whatever reason, and no special session is in place. And they say maybe we'll talk in January. But the problem is, the reason we want to get in sooner rather than later is we can allocate funds from the budget that we already have and ARPA money that we have. So you can look at funding that you have, just like we've done here, reallocate funds. That would be a special session discussion, where we can allocate and take money from, you know, a certain bucket and reallocate it to help alleviate some of that. The bottom line is, these are state, this is, the state, these are state costs. Okay, we got into, the moratorium was a state. The governor, by executive order, said we're going to have a moratorium. That's, the state made that decision. The Millstone was a legislative bipartisan approval, again, state. So the state should be coming to the table, in my opinion, and being stable. We need to help, because obviously, there's a problem. Too many people can't afford to pay their electric bills. I'm nonstop, that is my day. My day begins in the morning and ends at night, and there's probably 20 more emails in my box about people that complain about their electric bill. And there's nothing you can say other than you understand. And you would hope that there would be, you know, the bill was passed with bipartisan approval, the executive order, those aren't controls that we have, but we do have control to go back into executive, to a special session. So I don't know.
Do you think if enough municipalities put forth some push to the state, you know, as a collective goal, and even, you know, 70% is Millstone, but even the moratorium, or even going after some state ARPA money, or look to push to get some offset for relief, not just to ourselves, but taxpayers across the state?
I mean, the more pressure that's put on is the better. I mean, obviously, the more people that talk about it, the more, you know, the more letters that go to the governor. The governor said he's willing to do a special session, but unfortunately, he doesn't make that decision. So, you know, that's got to be agreed upon by the leaders of the Senate and the House, and for whatever reason, they're not agreeing. Don't know why, but I think, I think it would be something that would be important to show that the community, show the people in our town that we support them, and, you know, we're trying to help in any way we can, and that would be a way for us to help and to show the citizens of Clinton to submit a letter. The more, the better.
If you have projected cost increases.
I mean, a lot. I mean, 24% is not small.
Right, it's a big number.
And this woman also, it seemed to me, wanted us to, to address both the state government and Eversource, because she had a lot of blame to place on Eversource.
Private company, so they're going to do what they want to do. I mean, obviously, Eversource...
She talked about their...
Right. There's, I mean, the issue, it's a bigger picture than all of that. I mean, PUR is another issue. PUR is a problem. It's a problem, because it's a three-person board. Three people shouldn't be making decisions for the people of the state of Connecticut. So at a minimum, there should be five people on that board. Those are governor-appointed positions, so I mean, you know, you got to look at it and say, PUR has to be revisited, and there's something that has to happen. And as far as Eversource goes, they're a private company. I mean, I mean, the CEO made $18 million. I mean, that's the concerted effort and decision that they made to pay that man $18 million. And then they ask for, obviously, the repayment of these funds, which is what the state got into. The reason I, for me personally, the reason that the state needs to be involved is because the state got into that decision. The state made those decisions as it related to, you know, the Millstone plant. They made the decision as it related to the moratorium. So they play a part in that decision. And so, you know, the pressure that you can put on Eversource, I mean, yeah, but I mean, the letters like this, it just brings people to the table. You want Eversource, you want PUR, you want the State of Connecticut, all those people, the Energy Commission, all those people need to be at the table to find out what is the best source of energy for our state.
I'm thinking something as simple as a letter to follow the line with Cromwell, and if a lot of small towns or cities are, feel the same way, put the pressure on through the municipalities to put forth an effort to get a special session.
I agree. Let's do it.
Yeah, I don't, I don't, I don't feel any need to send, we're a municipality, that state, because there's a lot that Chris said that I don't, didn't know or don't know. So we'd be sticking our nose in something that we don't know anything about.
I think it's more so just a letter to show that you've, I mean, it's a show of faith. It's a show of good faith, it says, I mean, even for us, I mean, if you look at this number, I mean, I would have never thought this number.
That's a big number. But 20 more percent increase number. What the direct reason for the increase is, I mean, not just our taxpayers, but us as a community and us paying taxes for these buildings to keep the lights on, at some point, something's got to give. And I guess at some point, we collectively can find a solution, instead of continuing to pass it down to the residents of the town and the communities to share the burden. I think it's really simple. We're supporting a letter to find a better solution. We're not telling them what to do, but I think it's important to bring everybody to the table. And if the legislation's not going to come to the table unless there's pressure from the communities, we need to stand united together. That's how I feel personally.
Should we make a motion? We would need a motion. Are we allowed to make a motion at this point?
Not a recommendation on what you should do, just an identification of our financial hardship as a community.
The increasing financial burden to the town and, you know, to the town itself, to the town, this affects us. We all have to pay taxes, there's an increase in taxes to balance this.
It's basically a show of good faith, that you're saying to them, we support, you know, that people need to come to the table and have a discussion about what we're facing. I mean, and that's the only way to solve the problem. I mean, Eversource is a problem, PUR is a problem, we all know it. I mean, it's not like it's, I mean, it's no secret of what the issues are, but the issues are that, as a legislature, we need to come in and go to, go to a special session and talk, because you can't, nothing can get done unless we talk. I mean, because there's no, we can't tell anybody what to do, right? I mean, even, nobody can. The only way it is, is to come to an agreement on, are we able to use money allocated to the state of Connecticut through ARPA funding or other avenues, where we can then help the citizens? For me, I don't care how we got here, I could care less. I could care less that the bill passed in 2017, I could care less about the moratorium, I don't care who did it, no finger point, no politics, no nothing. This is about the citizens in our state that cannot pay their bill. That's it. That's all I care about, because that's what I, that's what I hear about. Every person that calls me, I can't pay my bill. Some of these bills are outrageous, outrageous. People who have $600, $700 electric bills, and they don't have the money to pay it. The moratorium to shut off is no longer available. Shut-offs now will happen. So you don't pay your bill, you're going to get a shut-off notice. And that's, you know, and I think that's the problem. I mean, hate to say it, but when you're up in Hartford, you play politics, and this is all about politics. Everybody wants to point fingers at whose fault it is. I don't care whose fault it is. The fact is, is we're sitting here now, we have a problem. The state got into these contracts, the state made decisions, own up to your decisions. Find it, and we have money, there is money that we can allocate before that budget is finalized. The comptroller doesn't get it until September. So when he gets that, when he signs off on it, the budget's finally, you can't change anything. There are funds available in there to renegotiate and reallocate. That's all you want to do. So a letter like this doesn't tell anybody what we want fixed, it just says, we're facing a struggle, not only individuals, but also our town. And then again, this, like he says, it's got to go somewhere. We got to pay the bill. We can't not pay our bill, so we got to pay our bill. That's an increase in our utilities, that's a tax-related item. That's going to have an effect on the taxpayers of our town.
So do we have a motion to...
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
That the chair and the town manager collectively draft a letter similar to Cromwell's, that the entire council agrees that is appropriate to represent Clinton the increased costs. Real simple.
Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
One, two, three. I'm sorry, hands on that, if we don't have everybody. Okay. Opposed? Abstaining?
No, I'm with the letter.
All right, great. All in favor, all right, unanimous. All right, thank you for bringing that up, Mike. Anything else, any other council discussion?
I just want to make one note. I haven't seen a five-year plan for the last couple of years or so.
That's on...
Is there one being worked on now?
We are, actually. Bob and I have been working about, or addressing that it is needed, and we actually have an idea to do a town-wide, like, master sheet, so we can look at a glance and see everything that's going on, the status of projects across the town. So we are, it is on our radar, and we are actively working on that. Yes, I brought it up at our department head meeting, and Bob and I have been, you know, as we've been reviewing ARPA and projects and trying to get some of those things off the capital plan and fund it through ARPA, we are aggressively working on it. So we will have one shortly for you to review.
My second comment is, I'd like to have Brian Manware or Mike Neff, give us a small report about the Clinton Fire Department responding with other departments in this area to the Southbury and Oxford flooding. And our Clinton boys were in, great, tell them.
And ladies, there were some ladies.
Come on, Brian, speak up.
I didn't attend, I sat in Guilford.
I saw Matt and Eric Mike, so Mike can speak.
The two Mikes attended.
Clinton sent six people, along with our UTV or Zodiac, six members. We teamed up with Guilford, Seabrook, Essex, Hattam, and South District as a task force, and were deployed to Southbury. Then we were split. Clinton and Guilford went on a rescue mission in Southbury, and the rest went to Oxford to deploy for some other things, all water-related issues. And Clinton and Guilford, together, were able to remove three people from their flooded houses and four canines. And it was the Clinton Zodiac, which you guys recently just purchased through Capital two years ago, was the vessel that was used to rescue those people out of their house in the floodwaters.
Job well done.
Not just Clinton, a fellow council member was the, the brains of the operation.
It's a united front. Everybody did a great job. Between six towns around here and Middlesex County, everything went really well.
Yeah, it was a one-large caravan, that.
Congratulations.
So basically, they make the request at, like, the Middlesex County Coordinator level, and it's just an email and a text string that goes out to each of the area chiefs, and that all got put together in about 45 minutes. Buster location, everybody together and on the road, so.
From time of notification until boots on the ground in Southbury was just about two hours.
Fantastic.
Great.
Thank you.
Very good.
Yeah, very good. Any other discussion? No? Any liaison reports? Anyone been to any meetings? Brian, I know you did.
Planning and zoning, they're in the process of selecting their plan of conservation and development consultant, and there was a presentation from the developers of Pearson, a lot of good questions on the property. A lot of them had to do with the space that the town's going to retain, but that's to be decided, so there wasn't a whole lot of answers there. Couple of questions on the septic system there, it's going to go back by the train lines. Apparently, when they were testing the soil, they tested the soil in the area of the land that's actually owned by the Stanton House, where the playground used to be behind the school. So they've committed to regrade and reseed that area as their, whoopsie, they tested the soil in the wrong spot. So that is moving forward, and there was a lot of really cool designs of what Pearson area is going to look like. I was trying to get my hands on that PowerPoint to get it to everybody, but I was unsuccessful, and as soon as I get that, I'll send it to Michelle to send to everyone.
Okay. Anyone else?
Park, you're right. Projects, the turf, they did agree, the company did agree to come back and fix that end, and supposedly, they'll be, it'll be playable right after Liberty. But that's to be determined, but that's a good outcome. Beforehand, it was, you know, there was no timetable, so that's good. The pickleball courts, if you haven't gotten to see that, they look really nice. It's all graded on the hill. They still need to put a retaining wall and a sort of a path upside, if you're looking at it from the parking lot, but that's really close to being done. The bleachers, I think, are done, and the scoreboard is up and functioning, and the press box looks nice. I think it was just cosmetic stuff they did up there, painting and stuff like that, but that looks good.
So to piggyback on that, I met with Bo today, and part of, I had mentioned at the previous meeting, I'm going to start having a department head come and give updates at each council meeting to keep everyone, you know, up to date and, you know, FaceTime. Bo, I'm going to schedule for September, because the projects should all pretty much be wrapped up, and he can give an update on that, how the beach ran over the summer, and I'm hoping that we can get some pictures, too, so everyone, if you haven't had an opportunity to see things, we'll, we'll be able to provide you some pictures of that as well, so.
Right. Any other liaisons? No? Okay, item number 14. Is there a motion to go into executive session and invite Mary and Michelle?
So move.
Second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So do we have a motion to adjourn?
So, second.
Second? Discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right.